It is now 5:45. Please join me for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Councilperson Zarita.
Here.
Galvane. McCoy.
Here.
Sharif.
Yeah.
Mayor Brown.
It is now past 5:45 and 5:35 will go into our hearing.
The public hearing for 5:35 is to approve a general plan amendment to amend the existing general plan land use designation from medium density residential to general commercial at 961 South Wilmington Avenue. And we need a motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Roll call. Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McCoy.
Yes.
Good evening. Tonight's item is a general plan amendment to change the existing land use designation of a piece of property located at... Can you hear me now? Okay, I'll start over. Tonight's action item is a general plan amendment to change the land use designation of a piece of property located at 961 South Wilmington from medium density residential to general commercial. The general plan amendment is necessary to facilitate the development of a car wash also previously approved on this property. This is an aerial view of the site enclosed in green. It has the area including to the north, which is the Miracle Market, and the property to the south, which is the actual subject site, the southern portion of the green rectangle. You will notice in the aerial, we have the Miracle Market to the north, a medical office building to the east, excuse me, west, parking lot for the medical building, child care center, and Dollar Tree store with parking lot and a fast food restaurant. To the north is the Compton Airport. This is the... This is the existing zoning map for the area. It is already zoned limited commercial. The area to the west, commercial as well, parking lot zoning and commercial to the east as well as to the north where there is a small commercial center with a 7-Eleven located within it. This is the existing general plan. The medium density residential is indicated here. This is the area that will be changed to general commercial to match the existing general commercial designation to the north. This is what it will look like should the general plan amendment be approved. The entire area will be general commercial. This area has been commercial since the 1960s. It was zoned commercial and had a land use designation of commercial prior to the adoption of the 1991 general plan, which changed it to medium density residential. The applicant already has an approved conditional use permit for this site for a car wash, but needs the general plan amendment to convert the medium density residential designation to general commercial. Staff recommends approval of general plan amendment 17-01 because the current land use designation is inconsistent with the historic limited commercial zoning of the site and the surrounding commercial zoning as well. This concludes the staff's presentation.
We will now open the floor to audience comments on the hearing only.
Robert Ray, City of Compton. If this is for the reason only so they can get their car washed, I'm going to suggest the answer be no. These people don't even maintain their property the way it is now. And to change it, I think it's just going to create more problems.
What's his name? My name is David Irons, resident of Compton. I'm glad you're doing something with that lot. I'm glad you are improving this city. But don't... I'm not into rezoning and I'm not into gentrification. But you got a vacant land and you could use it for... I don't agree with everything you say. I already know that. But anyway, I like that idea. It's just long as no airplanes flying into the houses. I don't know what's... How tall that zoning is. I believe it is 75 foot or 35 feet. Can't nobody deal with me on zoning because I'm the zoning master. And I believe that is a good idea. You could go have underground parking. You could have two-story parking. You could accommodate everybody if you design it right. Find the right designers. I might be the one. All you got to do is look at paperwork. That's a good idea. I don't know who's going to fund it though. I am for bringing money into the city, but don't take my money from me in this city. When you take the money from somebody, you put your life in jeopardy. That's why Abraham Lincoln got killed because he told those Confederate people their money was worth nothing. If I had the money, I would do a lot of things. Since I don't have the money, it's probably a blessing.
I had a question. How many...
Could you say your name for the record, please?
Yes, Cindy Santoyo. How many homes are you guys going to... Or does it look like it will be displacing? Is it just...
No homes are going to be displaced. We've never had an application for housing on this site in the entire time that I've been here. This was the first actual request for development and it happens to be commercial.
Okay, and there's a lot of... I ended up finding out that there's... Compton has about, I think it was like 72% of toxic landfills. Is that one of the reasons that this property wasn't used because of the land, the toxins?
No, there was a mitigated negative deck on this property as required by SEQA. And as far as I know, no toxic soil contamination was ever found. And no, that's not the reason why this was, to my knowledge, ever not developed.
Is this property going to be overtaken by the successor agency?
No. This is a complete, completely private funded, private operated development.
And so the development is just to extend a car wash?
Excuse me, can you repeat that?
What is the... The extension is just for the car wash?
Correct.
That just seems... So what regulations are you guys going to be having on the toxins and everything that they can be using on the car wash? Is there something that you're going to be in placing as well? Because in case you haven't noticed, when you use the chemicals for washing, it actually releases a lot of toxins that is polluting the air and the water that we're using. Are you going to have... Do you have something already regulated for those?
The mitigated negative declaration has looked at that. There are some conditions on the car wash mandating that. Also, when the building department reviews the plan check, they'll be looking for the storage, the collection of wastewater. Or most of the wastewater has to be recycled in car washes now, and that's per state law. I'm not quite very familiar with the actual intricacies of water law in terms of recycling on car washes. But if you can give me your name and number, I can connect with the building department and I can get more detailed information to you.
Okay, and what water system are you planning on using? Are you planning on using Compton Water Department? Or because, you know, we have six water departments, so which water department is it going to be running through?
That I don't know. I don't know exactly which water department services this specific area.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm just concerned about hiring. How many people from the community will you hire?
The applicant is president. He can answer that. I believe he, if I can remember from the planning commission meeting, was going to have a total hiring of about, I think, nine, 10, with two people per shift.
Any additional public comments on the public hearing? Thank you. And Mr. Holyfield, you'll be next after Mr. Boydin.
Good evening. Bruce Boydin, City of Compton. Just two questions. Just to... For transparency. Who granted the provisional permit that you claim they already have? And what was the decision of the planning commission on this provisional permit?
The car wash already has conditional use permit approval granted on appeal by the city council. The planning commission, when they originally heard this item, denied the request.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Holyfield, and I'm the president of the Compton Business Chamber of Commerce. Of course, I believe in growing of money and organic vegetables. Growing of money means jobs, businesses coming to our community, and particularly on that corner. I'm getting sick and tired. I've been here over 55 years. I'm getting sick and tired of going to these car washes like on Avalon and Alondra. And it operates... It would be operating similar to Avalon and Alondra where you have to go in one way, come out, and go south to the freeway. That's where it'll be over here. So why can't I spend my money in Compton? Not only I, but you too. We need to circulate our money, and so therefore I support. And not only that, that is a blight. That has a ghetto look. And my thing is a moratorium against the ghetto look. What is the ghetto look? Trash on that lot. Clothes from a clothes box. People standing around doing every kind of thing, drinking, et cetera, et cetera. For those who are familiar with that area, you know what I'm talking about. The car wash would eliminate that altogether. And any other questions you really have asked, the owner of it is sitting over there. The thing I'm saying is, and I have a couple more moments. We need business. And all you have to do is control it. And we need to have more of a friendlier environment toward business. I can see nothing wrong with that car wash. It could be regulated or anything else. And that's what we need. We need jobs. None of this nonsense about 30%, then you only have one person working or none of us working on some of these jobs in Compton. Thank you so much for allowing me your time.
Thank you.
Craig Henry, City of Compton. I heard you make a comment, if I'm correct. You said that right now the property is zoned under limited... Some people said about limited what?
It's currently zoned limited commercial.
And what is the definition of limited commercial as opposed to full commercial?
The term limited commercial is for... Well, it's a bit of a misnomer. It's the primary commercial zone in the city. The only other commercial zone in the city is commercial manufacturing, which is a higher level of zoning that principally allows the same retail use... higher level of zoning that principally allows the same retail uses as limited commercial, but adds the additional ability to have somewhat of a limited manufacturing onsite as well. Nothing chemical, nothing industrial, more assembly light manufacturing that like a furniture store or something might have that produces its own furniture onsite, sells it out front. Limited commercial is for all intents and purposes, the primary commercial zone for the city.
Frederick Gordon, City of Compton. I have two questions. The first question is, if they're going to put a car wash there, you were talking about the recycled water that they have to use per state law. My question is, will that water and the chemicals that are used there affect the head start that's directly next door to the school one? And then two, you spoke of hiring as far as the community. I just want to know how many jobs are actually offered or will be offered? And then if there's only eight or ten jobs offered to the community, but there are forty jobs or whatever, I don't think that's fair personally. So I would like those numbers of how many people will actually be working there total.
In terms of question one, the operation of the car wash will not negatively impact the daycare center across the street, across Wilmington. All the water is going to be retained onsite, recycled, stored and discharged appropriately in accordance with the state laws. The, in terms of the hiring, the applicant has indicated, and he can step up, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe a total of ten hires with two per shift. In terms of how many of those hires are going to be exclusively Compton residents, that I don't know. We are working or have put the applicant in contact with Ms. Kim McKenzie, who works out of Career Link, whose job it is to promote local hires, do interviews and work with the local employers.
Are there any additional audience comments to the public hearing? Thank you. Maybe have a motion to, excuse me? No, we are just closing the public hearing. The next step, the council will have an opportunity to speak on the item and then we'll proceed forward to the item if it's the will of the council. Maybe have a motion to close the public hearing? Second. Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita McCoy.
Yes, Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. Council comments or questions? Councilwoman Sharif?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I did have a question. I think I understood you to say that really what we're doing, are we going back to the original plan when it was first zoned? I think you said something about prior to nineteen ninety?
That's correct. The origin, the original land use designation was commercial, but in nineteen ninety-one, when the current general plan was adopted, it changed it to medium density residential.
So now we're really going back to when it was?
We're going back to what it originally was.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's why I just wanted to be clarified. Okay.
Any additional council questions or comments? I just have one question procedurally for the monitoring responsibility that's designated to the City of Compton. Do we have the appropriate staff or capacity to properly monitor this project and others relative to the mitigation monitoring program?
Yes, we do. After, or for example, a generic project, once it's approved and they go through building plan check, all the conditions of approval, which include the mitigation measures, are attached to the actual plan check set itself. The project gets built, we monitor in the planning department those conditions of approval. When the time comes to issue a building CO before it can even legally operate, again, we go through those same conditions of approval and check off the ones that have been satisfied, complied with or not yet addressed. And the ones that are not yet addressed, again, we then talk to the applicant and say, we're not going to give you a CO or a business license until all of these have been checked off. Once they are checked off, planning will then give a clearance for a building CO and then a business license.
Thank you. I just wanted that stated for the record because there are quite a few items identified that is the city's responsibility. Any additional council questions or comments? Madam City Clerk? We go directly to the item if it's the will of the council. Would you like to go directly to the item?
Yes.
For consideration? Okay.
So if I can have a motion to waive the order of the agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number five, is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton approving general plan amendment case number seventeen zero 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 one to amend the land use designation from medium density residential to general commercial for property located at nine six one South Wilmington Avenue.
Second.
Discussion? Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Yet audience comments?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The first speaker of the evening is Mr. Robert Ray.
Good evening, Robert Ray, Compton. Last week I talked about a bunch of events that were coming up and I talked about CPR and first aid. Folks, the flyers are available both in English and Spanish. This year, we're doing it a little bit different. You must have a flyer because in order to register, you're going to be cutting off the bottom half of the flyer. Add your check or money order for five dollars and put this in the mail. No onsite registrations or walk-ups are going to be accepted. Compton residents have first choice and it's only five dollars. I don't know where else in the world you're going to get CPR and first aid both for five dollars. So there's a few flyers here in the lobby, there's going to be more flyers around. If you see me on Facebook and Twitter, you can download the flyer and print it, but you must do the registration form on the bottom of the flyer and mail it in. And Compton residents do have first choice. And other than that, I didn't get a chance to stay last week after the closed session, but Mr. Clay, did they answer any of your questions about those properties? Because I selection, what's going on with those successor agency properties? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Holyfield.
Again, good evening. I have a few things to discuss. One, I'm really happy to see, well, first of all, I'd like to have a report of accountability of our funds, either from the city treasurer or from the controller's office at least once a month. It was a sign up there, as I mentioned before, that said controller's office, and then it was removed and the controller never, never sit there. So that's the first thing. Second, I'm happy to see the young people here tonight and the reason I am is because you get things done when people show up because it's called we the people. Secondly, I put in a request for a traffic light on Wilmington and Greenleaf by Walton Middle School. The purpose of that was for our students, the guard and so forth, and the public. And I've been getting a runaround with that issue for over a year. The students, and we have people, we have teachers and on the school board and all that with us, et cetera, et cetera. And they can't see the need to put that traffic light there. So I'm happy to see the students and their parents and so forth here tonight. Next, I called today to the city concerning tree trimming on Compton Boulevard between Dwight and Central Avenue. Told them there was a hazardous situation. I was told by the city person that the contract may be on the agenda tonight and et cetera, et cetera. Anyways, went into a lot of talk, a lot of talk. And twenty minutes after I got off that phone and got to ten thirty-eight West Compton Boulevard, a truck hit one of those trees and knocked it into that garage across the street from the liquor store. And there's people who are fixing the streets was out there cutting the limbs up and all that and bringing in trucks and things to haul it away. Truck had been on down the street in order to sue somebody. These are the things that, that's right, these are the things that I'm seeing. It is difficult to contact the city for anything, that's number one. They should try to contact themselves and see what I'm talking about. Another thing, we're too busy. Now that accident could have been avoided. Those trees should be trimmed. On Compton and Dwight there, those trees, the limbs are way above the power lines. That's a dangerous situation. We called Edison and that's not their part, it's a city situation. You call the city and just like on the West Compton, East, West, East Compton Boulevard, where it's still got the Christmas signs up and don't have those lines in the street or anything else. Can't see at night where you're doing, what you're doing in terms of driving down the boulevard. And then you sit there and look at me like, ah, ah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Holyfield. Mr. Royce Esters?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Royce Esters, President of the National Association for Equitable America. Our major anti-crime committee is going to have a meeting Saturday at February seventeenth, three PM to five PM, Holy Chapel Church, ten sixteen East Rosecrans, Aprila and Rosecrans, Compton, California, nine oh two two oh. The reason that we're having this is that we're very concerned about the sixteen-year-old that got shot on one hundred and seventh. And also we're concerned about the traffic, people going down the street, eighty, ninety miles, Speedway, like they're on the freeway. A lot of people have been killed, some of, quite a few accidents and we're very concerned about that. It's a discussion we're going to talk about. Also invited guest is going to be Max Huntsman, Inspector General, Representative of the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement agencies, and also Nages' attorneys will be on the panel. One of the things that we're very concerned about is that we need to patrol these areas more and the traffic division need to definitely get on top of these speeding down these, doing eighty, ninety miles an hour. Every time I turn around on Wilmington, they're having an accident, I think they should be looking into that. We're going to discuss it with the sheriff department at our meeting. Also, I see here this young lady is missing and I'm going to talk to one of my major private investigators and see what he'd like to get involved in this case. I'm going to talk to him tomorrow and see what he'd like to help this younger lady, find this, find the younger lady's missing. I'll talk to the private investigator, Nages, first thing tomorrow. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Ms. Marjorie Ship?
My name is Marjorie Ship and I live in the third district. City Manager Rambo, Mayor Asia Brown and the entire council, I have a couple of things that I want to address this evening. And the first one is about the seven ten freeway. I understand that we didn't have a person from the council to go to the meetings to discuss things that we would like to have in Compton. And we, we didn't have anyone to go, so we didn't, we didn't know, we were not invited to the meetings. And I understand the discussion is coming to an end and I would like to know why we didn't have a person from this council to go to the meeting to bring back information to the community so we could have our input as to what would take place on the freeway. I understand all of the cities that are going to be affected with the freeway had some input except Compton and I would like to know why we didn't have a person to go and bring back information so the community could have discussed and give that, give our input as to what we wanted in Compton. The next thing is, is code enforcement. When code enforcement give traffic tickets or what, I mean tickets in violation to people, I don't think that the traffic, the tickets should be forgiven or waived because they're friends with the mayor or the city manager or city council person. That is not good business. How, how do we expect for code enforcement to do their job if they give citations and the citations are waived or forgiven? I don't think that's good business practice. I know I had a ticket on my street for parking. I didn't, I forgot to hang my permit parking and I wouldn't dare ask Ms. I say no to forgive that ticket because I don't think I should put her under that pressure. And if I break the law, then I should pay the consequences. That's what we were taught as children. So how can we forgive a person that gets a ticket and not let them pay for the violation that is taking place? We need to support the court enforcement and not waive those tickets. If we want to keep our city clean or cleanup of our city, we need to support court enforcement. So please, if, if that is happening, I would appreciate that. It doesn't happen and I know there's a lot of violation in Compton, especially in my neighborhood. I called the code enforcement person yesterday, but I didn't receive a call from him yet because there's a couple of things I would like for him to check out in my neighborhood. Thank you very much for listening and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. David Irons?
David Irons, resident of Compton. I finally wrote down some notes. First, last week, Rambo was telling me that, telling us that people shout out the lights. I'm a designer, I've been designing stuff. Get some bulletproof lights. In fact, over there by Burrell McDonald Park, there's a two-story building over there used to belong to Willie Dunn, Dewan, he's dead. I designed that two-story. I've been designing it all over this place, but I don't like designing in Compton because people don't have enough money to really afford me. I would like to close in honor of Lily, Lydia Hines. She knew me before I was born. She, I don't know if you recall when somebody, some people got shot. Two of my nephew's friends got shot at Saint Bernard's football game. And Lydia Hines collared the guy that, she was a school police, she, she's the one that collared the guy. And then, and Dujo Chandler, he died. Every year they have a drum festival at Watts Tower. I'm, I will try to put on a drum festival here. We, we don't even do that, we just play drums. And this guy named Zack, he died. He helped me, he was a carpenter. So what I want to propose to the city is start engraving bricks in people's names and put it in front of that Martin Luther King and Caesar Chavez monument. I got over two hundred bricks that I could donate to the city because I'm, I might lose my house. So I'm going to become a homeless, what do they call them? People that help the homeless? I forget what they call them. I'm going to be homeless and them homeless people going to be with me. The bricks, I hope you're listening to me. So you could engrave bricks then, like the City of El Segundo, they got it in front of the, the post office. Bricks engraved with people's names. And Mississippi, not Mississippi, the Mississippi River and New Orleans, they got, it's called a river walk. So what you do is engrave people's names in bricks. And that is so easy to do. I remember Ms. Brown, she said, let's put a wall up. It's probably cheaper to, than me engrave people's names in bricks. I don't have the engraving machine, but I can't afford it. So that's my proposal. I'm still looking for a grant. Nobody going to give me a grant, so I got to get out there and start hustling. And then I'll make my own money without you giving me none.
Thank you. Ms. Cheryl Lockhart?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members and citizens of Compton. Cheryl Lockhart, I am a citizen of Compton. I would like to share with you and make an announcement that the key of knowledge, CDC and collaborative partner, Southern California Junior Cricket, we are opening our registration for our spring junior cricket program. This program is of no cost to the children or the families. We are accepting. We are accepting boys and girls ages six through fourteen. Uh, one of our, uh, desires is to promote sportsmanship and leadership amongst our children and to also expose them to some of the other, uh, areas of sports and sportsmanship. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Vela?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Major Asia Brown?
Good evening.
I'm here to seek help. To find my daughter. I'm asking the community of Compton to, to, to help me. You know? I'm seeking help.
Good evening, Mayor, Ma- uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
Mr. Vela's daughter is, is missing. Uh, she is a runaway. Uh, she's out in the community. We have every belief that she's fine somewhere with, with friends or people that she knows. Uh, I stand before you and, and the council, as well as this auditorium and the community to let those people know that are with her. They may think they're doing her a favor by keeping her from her parents for whatever reason. If they have a reason or a need to talk to us as well, I'm most willing to listen to them, as are my investigators. But they're not helping this situation at all if they're with, uh, this young lady a- and, and sheltering her. So they need to help us get her home where she belongs with her parents and her loving family. Obviously, as you can see with all the people standing behind me, this is a great concern to a great many people. And, uh, I have assured the family, as well as the people behind me, that the Sheriff's Department is doing all we can to help locate, uh, her daughter, and we hope to do so in short order, but we are asking for the community's help. Thank you.
Thank you. To the, to the Vela family, um, our, our prayers are with you. Um, I believe your daughter will come home. I know it's gonna take a village to ensure her safety, and, um, we were made aware of the, um, of your daughter missing, I can say for myself, on Monday. And so we're just requesting that you can send us the current flyer so that we can share that on all of our platforms as well. I know I received a notification from, um, the Sheriff's Department today as well. Um, and then, Mr. City Manager, if you could also check with, um, our billboard company and see if we can do a billboard, um, as soon as possible because I know that these early hours are really important, um, so that we can get, um, as much visible coverage as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
There's also other girls missing from the weekend, it's not just her. And there's also, Mr., um, there's another young man, Richard Al.
I'm, I'm gonna ask, ma'am, we have, ma'am, I'm gonna ask that you provide that information to the Sheriff's Department? This, excuse me, you're being disrespectful to the family. You had an opportunity to speak, this is about their daughter, they came here with their support. And if you have additional information about other people missing, we want them to come home too. And I'm just asking that you follow protocol and provide that to the law enforcement so that we can respect everyone. We are one community, and everyone deserves respect. We are not here fighting against you, we're, we're fighting for you and with you. So we have to come together, especially in times like this. It's not about grandstanding, it's about what we can do to bring these babies back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Yes, we requested that as well.
Like, uh, the flyer, please?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I know, and we understand that, oh, this is a process 'cause in the police department over there, by the Sheriff's Department, that's, that's what they told us. It's the process. We have to go through this, we have to go through that. Don't you think it's like in TV 'cause it's not? We just want help for you, for the police, everybody to move and help us find this little girl. She been missing since Thursday. You know what they told us? Oh, she's fifteen, you know how many calls we have? A fifteen-year-old runaway, you know that? Oh, I, yeah, I know, okay? But this is gone Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday already.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, we don't know nothing, we want you guys to help. Okay, the detective went out there, why? Because they see, they seeing pressure on, pressure on them. That's the only way, that's the only reason they did that. Don't wait until everybody, the, the media and everybody is in top of this. Help us! What, I told, I told the lady in the Sheriff's Department, what are you gonna wait for? Until something really happens? Job security or what?
Well, we're here to assist.
No, yes, yes, ma'am. I understand you're here to help us. Uh, we're just desperate, we're just concerned, we're just, you know?
Yes. And I know you just want your baby girl to come home, I know that's your means.
Just send out whoever you need to send out to help us find her.
Yeah, we're, we're all, all hands on deck. We just need the flyer, we're gonna send this also to our clergy list. We have a whole, um, listserv that we use of thousands of residents, so I'm personally gonna make sure that that goes out in the morning. Um, and we're gonna just make sure that we continue to get this information out to all of our community organizations and, um, just stay connected. And I know that Captain Thatcher is supporting the family, um, we'll stay in contact, and we appreciate you all coming down here to, um, really make this public request for everyone's support.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vela. Mr. City Manager, could you just ensure that the council receives the electronic copy of the flyer? Because, oh, 'cause I, I know that there was a hard copy going around, but we were trying to get the electronic copy. Exactly, on social media, 'cause we have thousands of people.
I'll post it on the website also.
I hadn't seen it, okay. Okay, so the kids, they have it in their system, okay.
Chanel has it, yeah.
Has Chanel sent it to us? Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Marisol Cortez? She with the family? She's with the family? From the Early College at Domingos? Or Compton? Oh, wow. Yes, ma'am. Have they gone to the school district? Well, we'll make sure we send the information over to them. I, I personally will make sure and get it out to them. Is it true that there are multiple girls missing?
I would imagine.
Wants to give the family an opportunity to exit. The next speaker of the evening is Ms. Cindy Santoio.
So I am here to speak on a few things. One of them is actually the emblem that we have behind here. Um, it looks like on February second, two thousand and fifteen, Tyree Godwin, Hiroyne Green, and Darryl Epsy had already filed for the patent and trademark of the emblem. Um, I went ahead and asked them if, does that mean every time the you, logo is used for the city, do you, or your family receives residuals? They confirmed and said yes. And I think that's a big conflict of interest, the fact that your family, Ms. Godwin, gets to profit off of something that you never built, and now we have to continue paying them for years and years and years. It's really, really disrespectful to us. Secondly, um, I, all of, um, last week and today, I actually went to the Metropolitan Board meetings and AQMD, which, Jana, you sit on the board of those, and it's a conflict of interest, so you're not supposed to be sitting under and receive stipends from there. Um, you actually, I went and see the minutes, it doesn't look like we also get representation, just like the seven-ten project. One of the things that is happening here, not only are we gonna have a city increase of our water bill, but, um, today, it was just approved through, uh, AQMD here, a four-point-three million dollar increase on the, on the water taxes. So we're also gonna have a state increase of our taxes, of the water bills, city taxes, and they also approved to increase our state taxes, which means not only are we paying now more for city taxes of the state, uh, for property taxes of local, but now state. This means that we're essentially having four increases in less than a year for the fiscal year of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, which, Jana, you should be, should be informing us, but obviously you don't go to the meetings, like most of them that you don't. So I think it's really unfortunate that you're not bringing back any of this information here. One of the things that we ended up seeing, how can we fight gentrification? Well, now it's gonna make it harder. Not only are renters and homeowners are gonna have that increase on their homes, it essentially means that we are already having a tough time for marginalized communities to pay bills, to pay their rent, and now we're having this, what? We're gonna have an overall thirty-five percent increase on not only our homes, but our bills as well. How are we supposed to do this? It's just so sad, the corruption that comes on here. So sad, and so, you know, I, I essentially only came here 'cause I almost got raped on one evening running. And I came to take up information about fucking lights, the fucking pots, and more and more I find out, and it's just so dirty what we have on here, so corrupted, it's just... None of you guys deserve to be on seat up there, seriously. Talk about transparency and transparency of what? Muddy waters?
Martina Ortiz?
Uh, before they speak.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
If I may have the opportunity.
Absolutely.
You know, I hate the word crook and criminal and all that.
I understand.
But, um, just for, for the record, Judge Fowler, how are you this evening? For the record, I do not, uh, receive a stipend from MWD, I do sit as the alternate, and I am not and do not receive stipends from AQMD. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Excuse me, we're gonna, you just can't do this. We need to just have some respect and treat people the way that we all would like to be treated. Everyone has their time under public comments to speak, and we do not interrupt anyone. We allow you to say whatever it is that your heart desires, but the council has an opportunity to respond against allegations as well. Madam City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, there was a statement about my sons, uh, receiving, uh, residuals from the city. I'd like to ask the city manager, uh, if I can ask him, if you can check with the controller's office.
I just wanna issue a warning to the audience that we've had over three outbursts that have been disruptive. This is my last and final warning. Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Would you do for me? Because I don't wanna, wanted to assume, assume that I'm, uh, got my hands in something, but can you check to find out, I think she said February of two thousand and fifteen, if my sons have ever received residuals from an emblem? Because I wanna know. And so if my children are not telling me something, I wanna know. And so I appreciate that. I already know you're not gonna find nothing, but just for her sake, I don't know where she got her information from, but just for her sake, can you do that for her? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Gilda Blueford.
Gilda Blueford, Compton resident. It's time to look deeply at what we owe the veterans, not just what we are compelled to give them. Good evening, honorable body. Madam City Clerk, welcome back. My sympathies to you and your family. I'm here to ask that you reconsider allowing the fifteenth annual Veterans Stand Down to be held at the requested location of seven hundred North Bullis Road during the third weekend of September. This can easily be accomplished by placing it on the February twentieth agenda and accompanying it with your yes vote. The previous no vote centered around monetary donations, which is a point of reference the group never requested, and the inspection of this particular nonprofit's financial record. More has been granted to other organizations with little or no requests for financial records. So why this particular veterans group? I ask you to set aside your personal differences and political aspirations by agendizing and voting yes on Tuesday, February twentieth, for the fifteenth annual stand-down at seven hundred Bullis Road on the third weekend of September. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Blueford. Ms. Karida Mahia? Ms. Mahia? Okay, thank you. And I believe Mr. Miguel Ortiz also exited. Okay. Thank you. Madam City Clerk? I'm sorry? Audience comments is over, we've called everyone on the list. I would just ask that you abide by all the rules as all other members.
Okay, I am abiding by the rule. She did not answer you, okay? So this is still public comments. And I would like to speak.
I always extend additional time for you, Ms. Boone. Feel free to speak.
So if anybody else, this is a public meeting. Thank you. Lynn Boone, City of Compton. And first of all, my first question is to councilperson in District One. If you are the alternate on the Metro Board, then I'd like to know who was permanently assigned to that board so that the people that are complaining about, who's not attending it, they can address the person that's supposed to be sitting on that board. Uh, the other thing, as far as residents concerned, we do not have a one-person leader of the city. The mayor is not the leader of the city. So when people come up here to ask questions, I don't know why they can't get an answer because the mayor chairs this meeting, but I don't see a gun in anybody's hand why a councilperson cannot answer a question. But they don't, but yet still they vote on items. The other, uh, issue that I wanna address is that I do see that the city manager is under, um, closed session tonight. And, uh, Mr. City, uh, Manager, I don't know if you'll be here or not. Um, I don't know if they're gonna keep, uh, uh, the sneaky little, uh, Lawrence Adams as city manager, I don't know. But whatever, we need a CEO here in this city. You know, I was not for you in the first place, and, uh, hopefully they'll get someone that will really sit in that seat and do the job for the city and not for each individual council peo- persons here, sitting up here. The last thing that, um, excuse me, that I really want to address is the funds here in this city. People, I just wanna tell you, the finances in the city of Compton are a mess. I can't put it in any other words. Like I said, John Chang was just not in the neighborhood and decided to stop here in Compton. It was for a reason. It was definitely for a reason. Uh, I have been going back and forth with that office for several years. This year is election year, and I'm just praying that we can get ourselves together that Compton will not be the city that they will stand on like they did with Bell. I'm just praying and hoping because our finances are terrible. I don't know who's calculating what is being spent in the city council's office and in the city manager's office, but someone needs to be standing there to tell you guys when you have spent enough because it is out of control. And the eating is just out of control. There's not a one up, up there that needs to eat anymore, but these meals are just too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Kelly, and then Reverend Gordon. Are there any other people that wanna speak? Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Thank you. First off, on your agenda, you have twenty thousand dollars on that item seven for repairs on a paramedic truck. Do we own the paramedic trucks? Also, on the warrant, you're paying Yale Chase Equipment Services three million, two-hundred-thirty-one thousand. Well, this is written wrong. They got two extra zeros, thank you. So however much they're paying, it looks like three million, so maybe that's an error because it isn't written like that. There's an increase on taxes, on water, on deposits, and yet, the people in Compton make less than twenty-five thousand on an average. Someone mentioned seven-ten freeway. Well, in two thousand and seven-
Well, in two thousand seven, I was the only one who applied for a seat on the seven-ten freeway to represent Compton, but the people administration then said, wait a couple of weeks. I already knew what was going on with that freeway. I had already read in the papers, saw it on TV, which no one else was concerned about. Now, all of a sudden, you're up in arms and concerned, they're gonna do what they want to do. I saw what they did to the people at the one-oh-five freeway. But let me tell you about my situation. You have people in City Hall who are stealing money in different departments, doing the wrong things in different departments. You have not had people or given jobs to people in this city. I'm for one, I know you'll never give me a job. I'm qualified to do a lot of things. I'm also qualified, and I made baskets for Valentine to sell, as some other people trying to make a decent living, and all of a sudden here comes building truck and threatening me. But I tell you one thing, tell your people, Mr. City Manager, when they come to threaten to take my products, make sure they come with a three-day eviction notice, just like you can't evict the homeless, don't try to evict me. If you take my stuff, then you know you have a lawsuit. Check with the city attorney, he'll tell you, I'm two out of two in winning cases against the city. One day of the year, you guys pull that with the people out here trying to make a decent living? You don't know the circumstances. One day out of the year, I'm the only one out there, no one else, nothing on the street except me. And here comes this guy along, out of nowhere, on Alameda. I could not believe it. So you know what? I have Valentine gifts for sale, and I need to make these sales, okay? So please, take care, thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Gordon?
To the mayor, to the city council, please, uh, please, please accept my apologies for coming up at the end of comments. I know protocol, I know etiquette. I personally just got here late, so I didn't sign up, so I'm just saying publicly, please, I'm, I'm sorry, it won't happen again.
Thank you, Reverend Gordon.
I know, I know time. Um, I, there was just four things that I wanted to, um, bring up. The first thing I wanted to bring up is a request, or a question rather, is, is there a rule or something in place, a policy in place for council members that miss multiple council meetings? I just wanted to know if there was policy in place about that, just so that I'm aware, um, and maybe some of the other constituents would like to be aware, uh, as well. Furthermore, I would like to say personally, I've been living in, in the city of Compton for nine years, um, and within at least the last five years, I have yet to hear of a town hall meeting in District Two. Now, maybe I'm just missing it, maybe it's eluding my address, maybe somebody's just taking the flyer off of my door or something to that nature, but I have yet to still hear of a town hall meeting in District Two. I hear of them in District Four, District Three, District One. I hear them all over the place except for in District Two. Now, if somebody is supposed to represent me, then they need to know what's on my mind in order to represent me, and I have yet to hear my representation, uh, be brought out. So I just wanted to say that. Uh, the second thing is, I had a request, uh, is there any possible way, I don't know if this is the city manager's job, or, um, maybe, uh, Councilwoman Zerita can make this happen, is there a way that we can get a crosswalk on Hundred and Thirtieth and Wilmington? Um, if you've ever been by there, I mean literally, they are flying down the street, and I've seen car accidents, um, almost hit kids from Willbrook because of the fact that they are driving so fast. I know that they put the sign out there, um, for them to slow down, but I just want to be honest with you, a lot of people don't pay attention to that, to that sign. Um, and so if there's any way to get a crosswalk there for the safety of the children and even the constituents of our church, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, the third thing that I wanted to ask is, um, I, I think it's awesome that we have paved some of the streets, that is, it, it looks good. I, I ain't gonna lie to you, my car appreciates you. Um, but is there any way that we could get the lines on Compton Ave painted on? And I ask because of the fact that, uh, everybody don't know how to drive well. And sometimes because the lines aren't there, people have the tendency to veer over into the lane that you're driving in, and that can cause an accident. So I wanted to, uh, make sure that we could get the last, those lines painted. And then the last thing is, um, if the public, um, if the public seat of city manager is public employee, do we have a say in his evaluation as well?
No. Thank you.
Uh, one comment, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just for the, the history, um, I don't remember the report, I don't have it at hand, but Mr. City Manager, there was a study that was done for a crosswalk at Hundred and Thirty-first and Wilmington, and I believe because it's a crosswalk on the street before that, that they couldn't put one, but can you follow up? Because there should be a study on file about a crosswalk at Hundred and Thirty-first and Wilmington.
Okay, absolutely, and I see the Public Works Director back there taking notes, so we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you.
You have, sir, just for the record, could you say your name?
Oh, my name is Terrell Brown.
Okay.
I've been, uh, I've been living in Compton for a couple of years now, all my life, and I heard, uh, somebody say about the streetlights at nighttime-
Yes.
When you're driving, it's, I live on Compton and Stanford, and then when you come down, when you're coming down Compton Willabour, the, the, the lines on the streetlight at nighttime, the, with lines in a row, you could barely see them in a row, and so like, and then you could barely see like the, like the roads when you-
Yes.
-switching lanes. And so I just, uh, I, I, um, suggest that, that, um, y'all fix it or whatever, and just make it like a little lighter or whatever, like, work, or colored, because on a broken line, you could, you could barely see it.
Yes.
And, uh, it, it causing, uh, my, my father, he had, he, he can't see, he, um, he, he got elderly or whatever, and so that's why I asked.
Of course, and, and let me just say that everyone deserves lines on their street, and I'm gonna actually address this in a few minutes. Um, we requested for the Public Works Director to be prepared to, um, report on that issue and a few others, so you will receive an answer tonight, sir.
I appreciate it.
And thank you for your comments.
I thank y'all.
Thank you. Um, and Reverend Gordon, you also had a question, um, the answer to your question is in the city charter, section five oh five, according to Madam City Attorney. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk?
Where consent agenda?
Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion unless a councilmember requests for an item be removed or discussed.
Some more.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number two under City Managers' Report is a request to schedule a public hearing to approve a proposed subdivision to subdivide an existing ninety-three thousand, five hundred ten square foot industrial lot into three separate smaller parcels for future development as a retail commercial center at twenty-two hundred West Alanga Boulevard, tentative parcel map number seven-five-zero-zero-two. Requesting that hearing be scheduled for March sixth, twenty eighteen, at five-thirty-five P.M.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? Was that Alanga or Artesia?
Artesia.
Did I say Alanga?
We said Alanga. Sorry. Artesia, twenty-two hundred West Artesia.
So, uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, did we do roll call yet?
No, we're just at discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, okay.
Please, ma'am.
Is that the same lot that the, uh-
CoCo's.
In-N-Out Burger was proposed?
Yes, it's for In-N-Out.
Yes.
Okay, so the In-N-Out is still in-
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They, they took them quite a few months to get through planning and building, but they're, they're still-
So that is, the CoCo's is gonna be developed too? Or just around it?
The whole plot.
The whole lot.
The whole lot. Great.
It's great news, I'm just happy that they're-
Yes.
Still moving forward, and I believe that's in the third district, so we're happy to be welcoming, um, In-N-Out to the city of Compton.
Yes.
It's great news. Probably not for our waistlines, but we're excited, we don't have to go to another city to get some good food. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number three is a request to schedule a public hearing to consider an appeal of a variance denial to waive the requirement to provide an onsite garage and to permit an unauthorized converted garage to main as living space at five-twenty-two West Peach Street. Uh, requesting that hearing March sixth, twenty eighteen, at five-forty-five P.M.
Some more.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Where's city attorneys reports?
Madam Mayor and council members, there's a request for a closed session for public, public employee performance evaluation for the position of city manager pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-seven.
Some more.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number six under new business, is a resolution of the city council, city of Compton, amending the twenty-seventeen-eighteen fiscal year budget to transfer funds between accounts and authorize the issuance of purchase order to municipal emergency services and All-Star Fire Equipment for the purchase of firefighting personnel protective equipment in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents.
Some more.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number seven is a resolution of the city council, city of Compton, authorizing the establishment of a purchase order for Rush Truck Centers of California, Inc., to provide paramedic and command vehicle maintenance and repair for fiscal year twenty-seventeen-eighteen in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Some more.
Second. Discussion?
Um, Mayor Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to ask, uh, the city manager, is this the, uh, a new vendor for the city?
This is a, a new vendor that will be providing additional service. We have, um, a couple of our old, uh, paramedic vehicles that are, uh, in need of repair. Um, we're trying to expand our ability to, uh, turn our fleet around and get them out, back out in operation. Uh, I don't know if you guys recall, we had one of them get, uh, really damaged in a car accident several months ago.
Right.
Um, so we really need to expand our ability to turn that fleet around in a, a quicker manner, and this particular, um, vendor was selected because they have a larger, um, mechanic's bay.
Okay, so this is, uh, in addition to one we already have in place?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number eight is an ordinance of the city council, city of Compton, California, amending section twenty-one dash one of chapter twenty-one of the Compton Municipal Code relating to recycling and integrated waste management, and this is to waive the reading.
Some more.
Second. Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
And on first reading?
Some more.
Second. Discussion? Um, Mr. City Manager, could you give an, I, I know this is from the city attorney, but are you able to provide an update regarding, um, where the city will be after this item is approved? I know that there has to be some additional, um, discussions with our current recycling company.
Um, Madam Mayor and council, this item is actually, uh, as a result of an assembly bill compliance.
I understand.
And so after, uh, we approve this ordinance, this allows, uh, the multi, um, structures like apartment buildings to, uh, have, be mandated to do recycling. Uh, so it just brings us in line with the, uh, the assembly bill, uh, in the future, and codifies that for us in the city.
I understand, I just under, there are also some issues with our existing, um, waste management contract regarding recycling, and could you agendize with the city attorney to, for the council to get an update on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I believe, uh, if I may, Madam, uh, City Manag-
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Uh, City Mayor, um, there's the, there's negotiations that are going on between the city and the, uh, contractor or franchisee, and it's anticipated right now that, uh, subsequent to adoption, if that's the pleasure of the council, of the ordinance, uh, an amendment should, to the, uh, franchise agreement should be completed probably by July.
Thank you for that update.
That would cover all of these changes.
Thank you for the update, Madam City Attorney. Any additional council discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number nine is a resolution of the city council, city of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into an installation contract with and establish a purchase order for Los Angeles Air Conditioning, Inc., for replacing the rooftop package units at the Compton Fire Station Number Three located at one-one-three-three West Rosecrans Avenue in the amount of fifty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty dollars.
Some more.
Second. Discussion? Mr. City Manager, could you just give a quick summary for the public of this item?
Uh, very briefly, Madam Mayor and council, the, uh, engine company number three is located on, uh, Rosecrans and Tejada. That particular, uh, station has been, uh, without, um, HVAC or heating and air for quite some time. Uh, last summer was incredibly warm in there, and so, uh, this item, uh, replaces those ten-ton, uh, air conditioning units on that particular facility, um, and also brings us in compliance with Cal OSHA and occupational sa- safety and health requirements.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, and if I may, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. City Manager, can, uh, you just, uh, also touch on that that station is our, um, emergency command post, that's where our backup, uh, financials are kept, and they have to be kept at a certain temperature.
Yes, so also, uh, engine company three is, uh, the emergency operations substation, uh, subcenter for the city in case of an emergency. Um, and also in, inside that facility is a backup computer system for the IFIS or our, um, financial, uh, computer technology system. Um, that is all located in a separate secured room, and it has its own self-sustained air conditioning unit with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number ten is a resolution of the city council, city of Compton, ratifying the emergency replacement of the HVAC system at Career Link Facilities by Benson Systems, and the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of sixty-three thousand, seven-hundred and two dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Some more.
Second. Discussion?
Just an explanation, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Madam, uh, Mayor and council, this is a similar situation that occurred in Career Link Center. Um, the Career Link, if you've been, uh, visited that location, uh, members of the public, um, it is a relatively large facility that is divided up amongst several office spaces inside. Um, that original HVAC system was designed for open spaces such as this particular room or council chamber, but due to the compartmentalization of that facility, the HVAC system was very ineffective. Um, this past summer, uh, and as the summers have gone on record for being the warmest, uh, you know, as we move forward into the future, uh, the staff, particularly on the south side of the facility, uh, were, uh, there are nothing but windows from floor to ceiling, um, the temperature inside grew, uh, just unbearable. So we had to replace those, um, air conditions, uh, systems there on an emergency basis Madam, uh, Mayor and council, this is a similar situation that occurred in Career Link Center. Um, the Career Link, if you've been, uh, visited that location, uh, members of the public, um, it is a relatively large facility that is divided up amongst several office spaces inside. Um, that original HVAC system was designed for open spaces such as this particular room, a council chamber, but due to the compartmentalization of that facility, the HVAC system was very ineffective. Um, this past summer, uh, and as the summers have gone on record for being the warmest, uh, you know, as we move forward into the future, uh, the staff, particularly on the south side of the facility, uh, were, uh, there are nothing but windows from floor to ceiling. Um, the temperature inside grew, uh, just unbearable. So we had to replace those, um, air conditions, uh, systems there on an emergency basis, uh, at that time, and, uh, pursuant to our charter, uh, we're bringing this to the council for, uh, approval of, of that emergency repair.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Ma-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Madam City Attorney, and I should have asked this question on the last item too. So with the dollar amount and coming to the agenda, I guess both of them are based on an emergency basis. We didn't have to do any process, any RFP or bids?
I believe on, um, um, council lady, I believe on both of these items, they actually did seek competitive bidding.
Okay.
And then, uh, they, they picked, uh, the most, uh, responsive and lowest bidder. Um, this particular one, Benson, is coming to you after the fact, because this work has already been done, because I believe, um, with the urgency there, this work had to be done during your dark period.
Right.
In August. So there was no way to come before council and get, uh, advanced approval. And in light of the, um, notification from OSHA, and plus in that facility, we have tenants, we have outside agencies and individuals who, uh, rent portions of that facility, and, uh, pursuant to our contracts, we have to supply, uh, air, uh, air conditioning and heating. We just can't, or otherwise we would be in breach of our lease agreements. So there, it's just, they were both, I believe, uh, this one on Benson, they got three bids.
Yes, and the, and last one they did as well.
And I think they got bids on the one that's upcom- upcoming for, um, the fire station, they got three bids.
Okay, thank you. I believe, um, employees should be comfortable. Just want to make sure we follow the process. Thank you.
Absolutely, and, and for the members of the public, the lowest, um, bidder was elected by staff in both instances, for the record. Any additional discussion?
Roll call.
Councilperson Zerita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number eleven will, um, have to be voted on after we canvass the election results. So we're at approval of warrants. Warrant number two-four-three-five-five-three, February the eighth, League of California Ci- Cities annual membership fee in the amount of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars requested by city manager. Warrant number two-four-three-five-six-zero, February twenty-eighth, State Water Resource Control Board water system and annual fee in the amount of forty thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars requested by the water department. Warrant number two-four-three-five-six-one, February the eighth, Yale Chase Equipment for the maintenance and repair and to replace a fuel level gauge in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents requested by the water department. Warrant number two-four-three-five-six-three, February eighteen, Government Finance Officers webinar for the city controller in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars requested by the city controller, in total amount of warrant seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
So moved. Mad- Madam Ma- I do-
Uh, for discussion, yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
No problem.
Um-
Does she say?
One question, one.
Oh, sorry. We'll put Sharif as the second.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, thank you so much. Uh, this, uh, item number two-four-three-five-six-one, Yale Chase Equipment and Services, I want, I, I noticed that the amount right now for the contract is three thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents, but the total amount from year to, from year to ye- year to date is like over a hundred thousand dollars. I was just wondering, uh, how long have we had this contract in place?
I'll have to get back to you on that, uh, council lady, and then look at, uh, how long we've been contracting with this particular, uh, department.
Okay, you, you know whether or not it's ever put out for RFP or should it go out for RFP, uh, what is the process?
I'll have to research that.
Is anyone here that can answer?
Mike, uh, Michael Harvey from Water.
Yes.
Well, we, is, is there a rest? We can just pull this one and make sure we have the appropriate documentation, yes. There's no need to estimate, and I don't want, want to take a verbal.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna pull this item.
Oh, you want to table it? Okay. And bring it back next week?
And Mr. Harvey, if you can come back with a report, uh, next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, on the item two-four-three-five-six-o, uh, that forty thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, this contract also too, I just want to know, uh, what are we getting for these, for this, uh, for the services here? I know we're paying the water bill and everything, but, uh, I'm looking at it, says something about drinking water.
That's a-
Are you?
That's a-
Yeah.
For the permitting?
Uh-huh.
That's a, um, control.
State Water Resources Control Board.
Right.
Yeah. I just wanted to give us a brief update as to what is really happening with this.
Those are the permitting fees.
It's just for the permitting.
Comes out of the water, uh, enterprise phone, out of the water plant.
Okay.
It's not on the general phone, it's out of water.
I know.
It's set by the, the state, I believe. The set fee is set, it's set by the state.
It is.
It's like a, a state bill.
So it's a state bill that we receive, and this is something that we have to pay for the drink of water for the community?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may, Mayor, it is a-
Yes, ma'am.
Every year, it's a yearly fee that we have to pay in order for them to monitor our water.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy.
Roll call.
And this is to exclude, uh, warrant number two-four-three-five-six-one. Um, councilperson Zerita.
So, just so I'm clear, Madam Clerk, so we're pulling two-four-three-five-six-one for what reason?
Mr. City Manager?
We are pulling it, uh, because Councilwoman Sharif would, wants us to do some research into how long we've been contracting with, uh, Chase, and if we need to go back to RFP on this particular item.
So you're gonna hold up their payment? That services they've already done?
Mm-hmm, for one week. Yes.
For one week.
Any additional discussion?
Roll call.
Councilperson Zerita.
Um, we voting on the warrants? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, can you help me where we're at?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all excluding the, the one?
Yes.
Yes. My vote is yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
You're at, uh, council comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilwoman Zerita?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, Madam, uh, Mr. City Manager, I, I'm gonna request, um, a report of the revenues at the Career Link and why the payment for our August repair is just now coming to the council. Um. And can you give me a, by the end of the week, can you give me a, a date of when you're gonna bring back the water workshop to talk about the conditions of our water, the testing, and the property that surrounds the water well on Grandee where we had some complaints about, um, the ground being unstable and the color of the water? I just think we need to do a comprehensive work study to, to reassure our citizens that our water is worthy of drinking. And, um, also, can you include in that the update of the water well at, the water reservoir at Seabree Park? Um, and also, well, I'll just make my announcements, and at the end of my couple of announcements, Mr. City Manager, can you give us a brief update on Seabree Park project?
Yes.
Um, I'll be hosting a town hall meeting, February twenty-first, from six to seven-thirty P. M. at Gonzalez Park, which is one-one-zero-one West Cressy, right off Rosecrans. Um, it's a District One Town Hall meeting, but everyone is welcome to attend. Uh, we'll have staff there, and, um, with Deputy Garcia with our Town Hall Sheriff Program, so if you have some, um, public safety issues, we can have someone, one to address them as well. And then also, I'm co-hosting Liberty Waters and Utilities. We'll be celebrating, um, the completion of well twelve C for the citizens of West Compton. Tours will be given, um, water conservation tips and games, ribbon cutting ceremony. Will all be done on Thursday, February twenty-second, at ten A. M. to eleven-thirty A. M., and the address is at the location at one-five-one-seven North Grandee Avenue. That's in Compton. If you have more, if you need more information, you can contact Liberty Waters or my office, and I hope to see you there. Um, also, um, we talked about Wilmington. There's a, uh, another thing that I just want to put on, uh, the Public Works list of things that needs to be checked out. Um, today on Wilmington, I can't, I don't remember exactly what street it is. I think it's a hundred and thirtieth, but if you're traveling north on Wilmington, and you make a right at the light before Elsie Gundo, there's a little island in the middle of the, where you turn, and you either have to turn on this side of the island or this side of the island. Well, the island is so faded out that today a car went right on top of the little island, and I think it probably totaled out the car. Everything from under the car was leaking, smoking. Um, it's, I think somebody should go check it out, and I think it needs to be painted, or some kind of, um, warning signs that there's a, uh, um, you're the expert, you can go check it out and figure out what needs to be done to make it safe. And then also, um, I'd like to welcome our new controller here this evening. She welcomed to Compton. Um, her, I don't remember her first name.
Rafaela.
Rafaela King. So she's here, and hopefully she can help to safeguard our cash. That's what I'm looking for, to really make sure that we get down to the root of the people's money and get the office rolling and, and get some things done. I'm, I'm very excited to have her here with us. Um, you want to introduce yourself, if you all don't mind?
I, I was, she says, no, we were gonna bring him up maybe next week.
We're gonna bring her up next week.
She, you can just say hello. She's a little shy. We're just gonna have you come on up and say hello. Welcome to the family. They're eagerly awaiting. Your, the best way to get in is just jump in there.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Just wanted to say hello, and I'm, this is my first day here.
You can speak to the camera, the camera's this way. You can just talk to us.
Okay.
There you are.
My name is Rafaela King. Um, this is my first day here, and so it's been a long day. Um, exciting, there's a lot of work to be done, and I'm excited about helping out and getting it done.
Thank you so much, Ms. King, and, um, she's modest, she's also a CPA. She comes, um, highly qualified and ready to get to work. We're gonna give her a few hours. Thank you, Mr. Holyfield, thank you. We're just gonna give her a couple hours. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
And then also to, um, to just as a, as a mother, you know, you just, your heart goes out to a family that has a missing child or runaway child, and, yeah, I, I can't imagine, um, that's about the most precious thing in my life is my child. So if anybody have any, any, any evidence, any whereabouts, anything, if you know anything, if you think you know something, you know, call and tell, because the girl is young, um, she, um, may think she'd want to be out, you know, having fun, but she needs to come home, and before somebody gets themselves into some serious trouble, you know. So if you know where the little girl is, if you think you saw her, all the tips will help, will lead a trail to where she may be, and, um, just hope that she hurry ups and hurry up and come home. She's fifteen. She's a Hispanic young lady, fifteen years old, height is five feet, two inches. Um, she was last seen in Compton on Thursday night, February eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Her name is Vi- Vener-
Niginy?
Niginy.
Niginy.
Thank you.
Niginy Villa. It is spelled V.I.A.N.N.E.Y. So if you guys know her or senior, please call this Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. We have we tips, you can stay anonymous, you can call, you can call. If, if you don't want to get involved, go to a, to the library and use the telephone. I mean, there's a lot of ways to call without having your phone number revealed to the sheriff's department. Just please help bring this little girl home. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCoy?
Just have a few announcements. Um, want to announce, um, Black History Month program that will take place, um, on Friday, February twenty-third, eleven A. M. to two P. M. at the Dollar High Community Center. For tickets, um, please wear your African attire, and for tickets, contact Dollar High at six-zero-five-five-six-eight-eight. And then I want to say that I attended, um, Southern California Edison hosted a Black History Month program over at our Dollar High Center, and it was really an, a really great event. I was happy to stand in for the mayor and do the welcome. It was a great event, and they said that they look forward to coming back to the city. They host it at different locations, and this is the first time they've brought it to Compton, but they look forward to bringing it back to Compton. They were really impressed with our center, and so we look forward to them coming back also. So thank you, Southern California Edison, and thank you all the citizens who came out to attend the event. And let's see, again, I reiterate the same thing that Councilwoman Zerita said. If anyone knows anything about this young lady, my heart goes out to the family, and I've already put it on my Facebook page, and I'll have my children put it on theirs, because it's nothing worse than not knowing, and I know this family is grieving, they're hurt, the whole family is hurt. So please, please, contact, um, the sheriff's department if you have any information about this young fifteen-year-old that's missing. And I would like to adjourn in memory of, um, Ma- Mackay Williams, who is the daughter of Commissioner Michael Williams. Um, her service will be on February twenty-fourth, and we'll be coming back with a subsequent need item to waive for the use of the facilities, as well as Cleo Davis. She's the mother of, um, most of us that's been around Compton a long time know the Davis family. It's a whole list of brothers, um, Richard, Tyrone, um, all of them, um, and their mother passed away on yesterday, and so I want to adjourn in memory of Cleo Davis. Um, and we're gonna come back with a request also for the use of the facility. And, um, Mr. City Manager, also, again, that, um, information, I look forward, um, there's a lot of people complaining about the water quality, and so please get that, um, report scheduled, or that workshop scheduled, so that, um, our citizens will know the safety of our water. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go, Si- uh, Mr. Siso Rambo, can you give the brief update on the Seabree Park project?
Mayor and council, um, Seabree Park update. I went by there this past week. Uh, if you've gone by Seabree Park, uh, which is at, uh, Compton and Elsie Gundo, you notice that the, all the, uh, the yard or the, the, uh, grass areas has been dug up. They're doing, uh, irrigation and installing water there, and utility lines. So right now, they're doing, all the utility connections have been completed, and backfilling of the trenches have, has been started. They're doing compaction and grading of the entire project to be completed by Thursday, the fifteenth. They're trenching for walking trails, uh, to begin this week. Uh, the construction of concrete, concrete, uh, curbs and curb pads will begin next week with the installation of the picnic, uh, shelter. Um, the, all, all the, uh, site furnishings, uh, been ordered in, including the trash receptacles and picnic tables, benches, and they're expected to be installed by March. The playground equipment has been, uh, if you've been out there, you see it's all gone, it's been ordered in, uh, is expected to be installed by early April. Uh, the baseball field equipment to include bleachers, benches, backstop have all been ordered and will be installed by mid-March.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sharif?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm not gonna go into all the details in regards to the, um, Black History, uh, celebration that's coming up here on Dollar High, but I am gonna say there will be a live entertainment, and also a cater lunch will be that day on February twenty-third, and the theme this year is from protest to progress, uh, and everything, so I just wanted to share that information, ba- make information with you. And, uh, just a reminder that the South Coast Air Quality Management District will be ho- will host a town hall meeting on Wednesday, February twenty-first, at Dollar High Community Center, three oh-one North Tamarine Avenue, Compton, California. The purpose of this meeting is to provide an update on the special air monitoring effort in the Compton area. The meeting will include a public comment, question and answer session for the community. Spanish tral- the translation will be provided, and for more information, please visit, uh, their website at www dot A Q M D dot gov. That's W W W dot A Q M D dot gov. Uh, contact Fabian Wes- Wesson, I'm sorry, Fabian Wesson, uh, at nine oh-nine-three-nine-six-two-four-three-two. That's nine oh-nine-three-nine-six-two-four-three-two. And also, the, uh, city has a great social media tool called e-subscription that is increasingly becoming more useful to the residents and business professionals wanting to keep up, uh, with the activities occurring in the city. This is a free technology tool that sends out notices in a variety of fields of interest directly to your desired email address. To sign up, visit the homepage of the city's website at Compton dot org and click on e-subscription, e-subscription, and enter your email address to receive any or all of the areas of interest, including, uh, the city's Career Link, the latest, uh, vital news- including, uh, the city's career link, the latest, uh, vital news, articles and newsletters, calendar events, council agenda and, uh, advanced notifications on planned maintenance, power outages and street closures and other public notices and press releases. And, um, uh, Mr. City, uh, Manager, I spoke with you in regards to doing, uh, you and I have spoken about Atlantic Avenue, doing an assessment of that, uh, street to see how we can, what we can do there as far as trying to slow down the traffic. And so I hope you can give me an update on that, uh, probably by next week so we can see where we are as far as addressing those issues over there on Atlantic. And, uh, I would like to also get a list of all projects, uh, budgeted for this year for the fourth district that include streets or whatever it is, but I would like to just get that list for all the fourth district, whatever projects we have that was budgeted for this year so I can make sure that that's information is shared with the community. And, uh, I really want to thank you for scheduling the meeting with, uh, Caltrans and also the county. That meeting went really well. And, uh, I had an opportunity after the meeting to have a drive, uh, Caltrans came and we did a drive-through of the different areas here in the community, whether we really needed them to take a look at, especially the off-ramps that we are looking at, they're cleaning up the streets. And they do have the new lady, her name is Deborah, and right now she is really doing a great job. I mean, she showed me a lot of different areas. They have started doing a lot of the off-ramps, cleaning up the off-ramps. And, uh, they also are looking at Atlantic Avenue over there on both sides during the cleaning that she's supposed to be giving me an update as to when that would be taking place. And so as soon as they, I get that information, I'll make sure I share that with the community. But I am looking forward to a very good relationship there with them. And also we, uh, discussed us possibly adopting a part of that ninety-one freeway and to clean in conjunction with Caltrans so that we could be doing that as well. And so again, I really want to thank you and your staff for coming out and really participating and actually making that meeting, uh, success and scheduling that meeting for me and thank you. And, um, and in my closing remark, I'd like to close by quoting Shirley Chisholm, the first black woman elected to the United States Congress. She represented New York's twelfth congressional district for seven terms from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen eighty-three. In nineteen seventy-two, she became the first black candidate for a major party's nomination for President of the United States and the first woman to run for the Democratic Party Presidential Nomination. And I quote, "Tremendous amounts of talent are lost to our society just because that talent wears a skirt." Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Just make one.
Sure.
So, uh, the water, we'll bring back the water presentation on March sixth.
Um, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I would just like to say on behalf of my entire family, the Ivies, the Godwins and the Banks, we'd really like to, um, extend our heartfelt thank you for all of the love and support that we received from the community as well as from the school district, um, the outpour of love that you showed my family during this tragic, um, time. We really say thank you, uh, we appreciate you, um, for everyone that stepped in and did everything that they could do uh, to support my family. I say thank you from the bottom of my heart. It brought tears to my eyes. We had over five hundred people at the service and everyone could not get in. But thank you so much for the love and support. I really, my family really felt it, so thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Um, I will be brief, want to give a couple of updates for this. Earlier today, I had an opportunity to, um, join a conference call with US Senator Cory Booker and Senator Tim Kaine along with, um, our city staff, our city manager Cecil Rambo and also our assistant city manager Lawrence Adams also listened in. And there was an announcement of a new opportunity zone which includes a new incentive for investing in low-income communities. And the zone is, um, different than any of the other tax credits. So it's different than the enterprise zone, different than the promise zone. It actually provides a temporary deferral of inclusion in taxable income for capital gains reinvested into opportunity fund communities. There's a step-up basis which there's an opportunity to recapture additional, um, gains invested in opportunity fund cities. Um, and there's also a permanent exclusion, um, of capital gains and sales of, or exchange of an investment in an opportunity fund for at least ten years if those investments are held in that community. And so, um, it's designed to stimulate investment into our communities, um, more than a, a one-time or a temporary basis. In the past, those, um, credits or incentives were realized, um, at the inception of a development and they were able to pull their investment out and move on. Um, but this actually will be a great incentive tool. So, um, our city will be, um, lobbying the governor's office for designation for the city of Compton along with others. And our hope is that we'll be successful in, um, receiving this additional incentive for economic development. Also, I want to just formally request, Mr. City Manager, we requested for the water departments to provide an update on the water quality, so I'm also requesting for that report. Um, also Public Works, they were set to provide an update on Public Works projects today, um, and they were not agendized. And so I'd like to ensure that they are ready for next week. You know, be a ready or not situation because I'll be calling you up. Oh, okay, well, they weren't agendized and so I have to follow the agenda. Um, also, it's important that we create a schedule for all of the public departments to present to the community and just to provide an update on what they're doing. Um, that's a standard for any city. And I know we understand we've had changes in management and department heads have had an opportunity to kind of recover, but this is just a public notice that we will be requesting for department heads to come forward and report on what you all are doing, um, on behalf of the taxpayers of the city of Compton. We have, um, advocated for our employees to be paid, um, an adequate wage. We've ensured that we kept our bargain and now it's time for everyone to be accountable for, um, the, the funding that they receive. And our department heads are paid well here, um, and we expect for transparency to happen at every level. And so this is just a fair warning that we'll be calling every department, one by one, every week. And that will allow the, the residents to understand what's happening and we can clear out any, um, issues with communication. Thank you. And if you can just submit the calendar to the council for review and that way it can be a, a public document and we can stick to that calendar. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Um, just a couple of events, um, in honor of Black History Month. We are hosting the Creators of Black Love and they are, uh, there's a show, um, that really focuses on families and, um, they'll be at the Neighborhood, um, NHS, excuse me, Sustainable Community Center at ten fifty-one West Rosecrans, um, February twenty-first, which is next Wednesday, from seven to eight thirty PM. Um, the attendance is capped to a hundred and fifty people and RSVP is required. And you can go to blacklovecompton event bright dot com. The event is free, um, and we'll, we will be hosting, um, actual couples from the show and there'll be surprise guests as well. So please come on out for a great conversation about love and families in the city of Compton. Also, we have our monthly open mic night, February twenty-second, twenty eighteen. And we have, um, Compton's own Amber Riley, who, um, is a, an excellent singer, um, beautiful person inside and out. And she will be, um, at our Co- Compton Open Mic as a special guest. So come on out and hear, um, a very special performance. And that is February twenty-second, so that's next Thursday from seven to ten thirty PM at the Dollar High Community Center. Um, also lastly, we have our Compton Art Pop-Up on February twenty-fourth. Um, the location is the MLK Transit Plaza in front of the Blue Line. The time is eleven AM to four thirty PM and that is February twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen. Um, everything is free, there are amazing artists that have confirmed and they will have, um, all types of visual media and, um, all types, types and forms of art on location. So please come on out and also there will be food trucks on location. Um, and lastly, um, Mr. City Manager, we, you and I have discussed this as well. Um, I just would like to bring forward, um, an item to solidify the actual time of year that the city controller and the city manager are evaluated by the council. Those are the two positions that the council, we're authorized and mandated to oversee. And we need to just have a set time for evaluation so that, um, there isn't a, a question or concern, um, when this occurs. Do you have any feedback on that?
I think the last council direction on the controller was that you guys wanted to see the, the controller each month?
Yeah, so the controller, um, I was actually going to speak on that, um, after this, but there should be a set time, I believe, at least annually, a minimum for the controller and the city manager. And then as the community was introduced to Ms. King, she is our interim controller. And so the council has made a collective decision to have a monthly review, um, of the items that she'll be working on so that we can just stay on track as a team and ensure that we're following our work plan to correct some of our financial challenges. And so, um, she is aware of this and we'll be working collaboratively together on these items. And so this is something that will be scheduled on a monthly basis. So, um, not to surprise anyone, this is just to ensure that we're following our work plan. Um, and then lastly, we will adjourn, um, in the memory of Mica Williams. Oh, excuse me, we were, thank you, Councilwoman. We were recessing in the memory of Mica Williams, Cleo Davis and Harold Williams, who is the brother of Bishop Hillary. May we have a motion to recess? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. We will now proceed forward to our Urban Community Development Commission meeting. Thank you all and good evening. We're recessing to closed session for our evaluation of our city manager. Good evening, we will now resume the Compton City Council meeting with a report out from closed session by our city attorney.
Motion to.
Oh, may we have a motion to reconvene?
So move.
Roll call?
Councilperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Here.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'd like to say my earlier absence was due to a special personnel board hearing this evening. Um, we had a closed session. Perform, a public employee performance evaluation titled City Manager pursuant to California Government Code, Section five, four, nine, five, seven. Present in closed session was city council with the exception of Councilman Galván. And there is no reportable action, uh, taken. That'll conclude the report out.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. May we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We have to do item number eleven.
Okay.
Which is a resolution of the city council of the city of Compton, California, declaring the results of the special municipal election held in said city on January twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Counsel, excuse me, Councilperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. May we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Good night.
Good evening.